To order, call on Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, again, we come to you and thank you for this opportunity to serve you and to serve the folks of this county, and I pray, Father, that we will not do anything to dishonor you or harm the folks of this county, but instead you would give us wisdom and understanding that we may do those things which would glorify you and benefit those few folks we were elected to serve, and we ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Come on, Mr. Mashman, for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have two adjustments to make to the agenda this evening. The first is an addition. It will be item K, and it is a resolution to call for a hearing on a special assessment district, and the hearing date would be October the 21st at 7:00 PM. The second item is authorization to award Deputy Ronald Wyatt, retiring from the Sheriff's Department, and to award him with his badge and sidearm. That would be item L. Mr. Chair, those are the two adjustments to the agenda that I have.
Are there any additional adjustments to the agenda or questions? If you would come forward, there are several things that need to be presented to you tonight. Will or not, I entertain motion for the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay. Any questions, we go on to motion. If there's anyone else in the audience who would like to present a plaque or who would All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
like to come and stand with Wyatt, you can come forward now. Aye. Those opposed. The plaque reads, "Ron Ian Wyatt, in appreciation for your years of dedicated service to Irel Presentation and special recognitions and awards. The first one tonight is Sandra G. Compton, retiree from corporate extension. We'll call Mr. Ken Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
County, 2008."
Ms. Compton is retiring after 13 years and 2 and 3 months, which is 6 months.
Congratulations to you for your retirement. And there's two others here. There is a flag.
We certainly appreciate her service to the Irel County extension and to the citizens
Okay, let's turn that around. This flew over the Capitol, if I understand correctly, and this is presented to you also
of Irel County.
Ms. Compton. for your years of service.
Thank you for your service.
And... Let's read this. If you'll hold that, I've got some glasses on here. The flag of the United States of America. This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on August 29th, 2008. At the request of Honorable Virginia Fox, a member of Congress, this flag was flown in recognition of Lieutenant Ron Duck Wyatt, 20 years of service to the Irel County Sheriff's Department, on occasion of his retirement. And this is presented to you also. And there's several letters here from Richard Burr, one from Richard Burr, one from Elizabeth Dole, and another one from Virginia Fox. And I won't read all these tonight, but all are presented to you in your honor of serving 20 years of service. Thank you. Thank you. We have someone here from the SBI. Would you like to come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
My name's David Callum. I'm Special Agent in Charge with the SBI's Northwestern District out of Hickory, and our field office covers Irel County. And I wanted to make a presentation here at your meeting to Lieutenant Wyatt. Ron, if could you step over here, please? And I'm going to refer to you as Ron Wyatt rather than Duck, which I think most people in Irel County know him as. But, Ron, I'd like to present to you a certificate of appreciation from Director Robin Pendergraph of the SBI, and also on behalf of Attorney General Roy Cooper of the North Carolina Department of Justice. This certificate is presented in recognition and appreciation for your professional and dedicated service to the citizens of Irel County during your career with the Irel County Sheriff's Office. Over the years, you have worked with many SBI agents and were instrumental in solving numerous major crimes, including homicides, narcotics, and crimes of violence at the state and federal levels. Throughout your career, you have always been a close friend and ally of the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. We are grateful for your spirit of cooperation and positive working relationship you have exhibited with agents and staff of the State Bureau of Investigation during your distinguished career. Your friends and colleagues in the SBI wish you the very best in your well-deserved retirement, presented this the 16th day of September 2008. Robin P. Pendergraph. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation will be from Mrs. Ann Brownin. She's the executive director of Catawba Land.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to tell you today a little bit about the Carolina Thread Trail, and also thank you for the field promotion. My boss is actually the executive director of the Catawba Lands Conservancy, and I am the project director of the Carolina Thread Trail. But I do want to tell you about this, the Carolina Thread Trail, which is a bold vision, the idea of connecting existing greenways and trails and open spaces and interesting destinations throughout a 15-county region in two states, touching over 2 million people. The idea of the Carolina Thread Trail started about three or four years ago when two nonprofit organizations, the Catawba Lands Conservancy and the Trust for Public Land, had this idea of a regional trail network to help advance open space and to help bring other benefits to folks in our community. And they went to the foundation for the Carolinas, a regional community foundation, who was very inspired by the idea and gave us some funding to really do some planning and exploration. So we started that by looking at different regional trail networks throughout the country, and we talked to folks there about the many benefits they were receiving from having their trail networks, things like economic development by inspiring new businesses to locate there, by increasing property values and bringing tourism. They also talked about the health benefits that they were receiving and the environmental benefits from setting aside green space to help water quality and air quality, also by connecting diverse neighborhoods and really improving the fabric of their communities. So we talked to them about the models for their regional trail networks. We also went around to each of the 15 counties and talked to people locally about this idea of a regional trail network. We wanted to get their reaction and their ideas for what they thought about it, how they thought it would work in our region, and what we could do to help them in their efforts. So what we heard was several things that really informed the process of how we developed our model for the Thread Trail. One thing we heard loud and clear was it's all about community self-determination, that while we wanted to develop a network of connected trails, that really the local communities needed to determine the location and character of their trails. Another thing we heard was that one size does not fit all. You know, what works in Mecklenburg County or Gaston County might not necessarily work in Irel County, so we needed a flexible model that would accommodate the differences within our region. And then the last thing we heard, or another thing we heard, was that one of the obstacles to making this a reality was funding, and that we needed to have a funding model that would work for our region. So we took that information and developed our model for the Thread Trail in which we really see ourselves as serving three roles. One is to create this vision of connectivity and really inspire people about what this could bring to our community. And we developed a concept map that we've left some with your clerk that you can take a look at. It's purely a concept, and the idea is that the communities will determine how the Thread Trail unfolds in their counties and areas. The Thread Trail is envisioned as the backbone of a network of trails throughout this region, so it will inspire additional trails. By being connected, it will enhance everybody's investment and the use of their individual trails. A second role that we play is one of providing technical resources for what we call the trail practitioners, the folks, your planning and parts and rec folks who are really going to make this happen in the communities that choose to participate. We are planning actually a trail forum. Our first one is going to be in Irel County, down in Mooresville, at the Charles Mack Center, and that'll be an opportunity to bring groups from throughout the region, planners and parts and rec folks primarily, to share some best practices and hear from some experts on trail building. And then the third of our roles is one of funding. We are conducting a private capital campaign to raise a pool of money to give out to communities in the form of grants to plan and build their trails. We are well on our way in that process. We have a cash goal of $25 million, and we have commitments of 15 so far. So we'll be giving out grants to communities from that pool of funds. We're also working with communities, and will be, to help them access other public funding sources, state and federal, and if they're interested, local sources of funding, and help them really develop a strategy for funding their trails. We started this process of developing this grants program to parallel the steps to creating a trail. First, you need to start with a plan, and we are giving out grants to develop a master greenway plan with the municipalities and a county working together to develop this plan and identify the key legs of the network to be the Carolina Thread Trail. After you have your plan, you can prioritize some corridors and design the specific location of the trail within a corridor, design the look and feel that you want your trail to have, secure the land. Some will be public land, some will be private donations, some will be acquired land where you would purchase from landowners, and then finally construct the trail. And there'll be many different types of trails that you can construct, and that, again, is to the local communities to determine. So we started the process of, we've given out some pilot planning grants to Gaston County and York County, South Carolina. Each received $50,000 planning grants from the Carolina Thread Trail, and we're about three-quarters through the process of developing this master plan for those two counties, which has included two rounds of public input. We've talked to neighboring counties about where to point at the county boundaries, and we'll be going to the elected bodies in Gaston and York here in the next few months to have them adopt this trail plan, and they can move forward and start implementing their trails. So it's gone quite well so far, and we're looking forward to having those first two master plans under our belt. We're hoping that throughout our 15-county region, Mecklenburg is a little different story because they already have a master greenway plan, but we hope that all of the other 14 counties will be interested in participating in this grants process, receiving a grant, and going through the master planning process. And that would also tee them up to the grant processes afterwards as they start implementing their trails, and then we would also work with them to tap into other funding sources. So part of the process, we are reaching out to elected bodies within our footprint to tell you about the program in hopes that you will be interested in participating. The first step, we've asked folks to consider a resolution of support, and we left some suggested language with your clerk to, this is a general resolution saying, you know, if you do, that you think this is a good thing, that something you might be interested in participating, and then we would be back to you to talk about specifically the planning process and your interest there. We do have some folks locally that sort of the beginning of a steering committee that have shown a lot of interest in leadership in this process, and they'll be working with us and with you if you choose to participate in taking this to the next step. So that's a general overview. It's a big plan, as I said, a bold image, but one of the things that we hear throughout the county is if we don't, or throughout the region, if we don't get started now, it won't be a possibility with land prices increasing and with development. And part of this process, you know, if we do the planning right, and a lot of developers have shown a lot of interest in participating and building trails to have them accessible to their communities. So we're excited about moving forward and hope that Irel will have an interest. And I'd love to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Brown? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer this resolution of support for the Carolina Thread Trail, whereas Irel County is committed to maintaining and enhancing quality of life for its citizens and recognizes that the Carolina Thread Trail will contribute to quality of life by weaving together communities via a regional network of trails and greenways, eventually connecting 15 counties and millions of citizens. And whereas many communities in our region have taken a lead in planning and/or building local trails and greenways, and those efforts can be greatly enhanced by being connected to a larger regional network of trails. And whereas trails and their green buffer areas will help improve the quality of the air we breathe by preserving trees and the vegetation and by promoting non-motorized transportation, and will enhance the quality of our water through natural buffers and mitigation of stormwater runoff. And whereas trails and greenways provide key amenities to neighborhoods and safe areas for our citizens and children to travel, exercise, play, and connect with nature away from heavily trafficked areas. And whereas trails have significant impact on the economic viability of the region through increased levels of tourism, enhanced property values, added jobs related to the construction of and along the trail, as well as enhanced ability to attract and retain businesses to the region due to improved quality of life. And whereas trails and greenways are freely accessible community assets, offering opportunities for recreation and exercise to everyone, including children, youth, and families, and provide safe places for people to experience a sense of community and create stronger social and family ties. And whereas there is no second chance to protect the Carolinas' great resources in this unique way for our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and the cost of these invaluable resources will only increase in the future. And whereas private funding is available to communities from the Carolina Thread Trail for planning and construction of regional trails, and this private funding will leverage public funding from federal, state, and various sources. Now therefore, be it resolved that Irel County supports the Carolina Thread Trail and is committed in concept to working with neighboring communities and with the Carolina Thread Trail to plan, design, and build a system of trails that will connect our communities, people, and special regional points of interest for years to come. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Tyce. Any questions regarding that motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. I'll say it. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Mashman, we're calling you for administrative matters.
I do have some administrative matters under consent agenda, but I would like to say before our two retirees leave us, and I'm sure they'll leave in a moment, that I, because of the announcement I've made, probably have a greater understanding tonight of some of the excitement, but also the apprehension that each of them go through after committing as many years of their life as they have to a cause that they feel very strongly about. And I think that I'd like to take the opportunity to, let's just give them another round of applause because they really deserve it. And with that, Mr. Chairman, do have some administrative matters that are under the consent agenda. Item A is to call for a public hearing on October the 7th of 2008 at 7:00 PM regarding the countywide farmland protection plan for Irel County. Item B is approval of the August refunds and releases. Item C is requests from the Sheriff's Department for approval to purchase Spillman computer software with this company being the sole source provider, along with the purchase of a computer-aided design or CAD system for the Emergency Communications Department. Item D is requests for approval to designate the WorkFirst program as an electing county and for this status to extend from fiscal year 2009 to 2011. Item E is requests from the Mooresville Graded School District for approval to apply for funds from the North Carolina Education Lottery proceeds. Item M is to call for a public hearing on October the 7th of 2008 at 7:00 PM to receive comments regarding the application for community development block grant funds. Item G is a approval of a resolution that is required for the termination of AMBAK bond insurance on the Series 2003 refunded bonds, and a resolution to call for a public hearing on September the 30th at 2008. Item H is a request for approval of a resolution requesting that Garner-Bagnall Boulevard qualify as a strategic highway corridor. Item I is a request for approval of a National Long-Term Care Residence Right Week 2008 proclamation. Item J is a request for approval of the September 2nd, 2008 minutes. Item K is a resolution to call for a hearing on the special assessment district for October the 21st at 7:00 PM. And item L, again, is to award the badge and sidearm to retiring Deputy Ronald Wyatt. Those are the consent agenda items. Mr. Chair, unless you have questions.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll say it. Appointments to boards and commissions, adult care, home, community advisory committee, full appointments.
Move to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Move to table, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Unfinished business update on the Irel County comprehensive plan. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging me tonight. I wanted to take a little bit of time to give you an update on our comprehensive plan since we've been working on this for several months now, and I'm sure some of you have some knowledge of what we've been doing, but just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of where we're at and how we've gotten here and some of the concepts that we've been discussing. So I'll try to make this fairly brief and leave some time for questions at the end. Excuse me. What I'm going to go through tonight is just an overview of what we have done, what the plan is hoping to accomplish, our timeline, where we've been, and when we hope to finish the project, talk a little bit about our public forums, talk about some of the major points, because these major points are issues that eventually will land before this board when it comes down to a potential adoption of this plan, and finally, talk about our two committees and the progress that we've made thus far. The plan that we've been going through, and if you went to any of the public forums, you probably picked up on this, it's not your everyday land use plan. The plan that we have in place that was adopted back in 97 was basically a map with spots of color all over it, some recommendations tying some of that fairly loosely to transportation, and we went and amended it about 65 times. So we've taken a different route this time, and we've tried to look at land use in a very comprehensive way. The list that I have up on the screen are some of the elements that we have taken into consideration in our land use decisions. We'll be dealing with much more fine-grained recommendations when we, I anticipate, when we come back with a plan to present to you, and to my way of thinking, that's going to be a much better document. We're looking at schools, which we're doing through our land use decisions every month or when we bring cases to you now. We're using the Warren Study to get a good idea of where the population is anticipated to be and try to deal with that. Emergency services, we're bringing in a very big effort on intergovernmental cooperation, talking specifically with all of the towns. Motion to table. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Personnel Advisory Committee?
No, that's Recreation Advisory.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I messed you up. That's what I was speaking of, Mr. Robertson. I got you off stride there. I'm sorry.
Motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Personnel Advisory Committee, two appointments?
I think. Mission to pull. Point Don Circe and Alma Oliphant.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Unfinished business update on the Arale County Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging me tonight. I wanted to take a little bit of time to give you an update on our comprehensive plan since we've been working on this for several months now. And I'm sure some of you have some knowledge of what we've been doing, but just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of where we're at and how we've gotten here and some of the concepts that we've been discussing. So I'll try to make this fairly brief and leave some time for questions at the end. Excuse me. What I'm going to go through tonight is just an overview of what we have done, what the plan is hoping to accomplish, our timeline, where we've been and when we hope to finish the project. Talk a little bit about our public forums. Talk about some of the major points because these major points are issues that eventually will land before this board when it comes down to a potential adoption of this plan. And finally, talk about our two committees and the progress that we've made thus far. The plan that we've been going through, and if you went to any of the public forums, you probably picked up on this, it's not your everyday land use plan. The plan that we have in place that was adopted back in 97 was basically a map with spots of color all over it, some recommendations tying some of that fairly loosely to transportation. And we went and amended it about 65 times. So we've taken a different route this time, and we've tried to look at land use in a very comprehensive way. The list that I have up on the screen are some of the elements that we have taken into consideration in our land use decisions. We'll be dealing with much more fine-grained recommendations, I anticipate, when we come back with a plan to present to you. And to my way of thinking, that's going to be a much better document. We're looking at schools, which we're doing through our land use decisions every month or when we bring cases to you now. We're using the Warren Study to get a good idea of where the population is anticipated to be and try to anticipate and deal with that. Emergency services. We're bringing in a very big effort on intergovernmental cooperation. Talking specifically with all of the towns, dealing with growth areas outside of those towns, utility expansions, things of that nature. We're trying to anticipate what they're anticipating as part of our comprehensive planning process. We're looking at environmental issues and also economic development. We've got both of the economic developers in the county sitting on our committees to help us make these decisions. Looking at the timeline, we began this project back in March. Took us a while to get what I submitted to you, the existing conditions report, put together because that's actually a comprehensive background check on the county in itself. You know, it probably will not be part of the overall plan, but that was one of the building blocks we used that will help us get to the end result. After that document was completed, we held our public forums. We had four forums that we held throughout the summer, and I'll go through those in a little bit more detail in just a minute. We have our two committees. We have a technical committee that is made up of practitioners, people such as myself, members of the school districts, planners from other jurisdictions, things of that nature. There's about 10 to 15 people. It's kind of a fluctuating type of group. And the second is the political appointees, the board that you all put in place to help us steer the more policy-driven decisions that are actually coming about right now. Now we're to the point of giving the project status. I feel like we're about halfway through. We're getting into the meat of the project, looking at land use, looking at the growth areas outside of the towns and beginning the true planning in earnest. And finally, I hope that we will have a completed draft done and presented to our planning board in either December or January of next year, December of this year, January of next year. The four public forums that we had, I wish we would have had a little bit better attendance. Some were better attended than others. The highest attendance was, if I remember right, in the North District. We had one up in Union Grove, one at the Statesville Civic Center, one at Little Joe's in Troutman and one at the Citizens Center in Mooresville at the Max Center. 132 people total showed up, but I think that the Troutman meeting only about 12. So the bulk of the attendance were the three other meetings. We asked a broad range of questions to try and again, get back to the comprehensive nature of this document and as much as anything to get a flavor of what people are thinking about just various issues to help us move forward. Priorities, and I'll get to this in a minute as well. In the polling of people that were in attendance, the priorities were growth management, farmland/rural preservation and high-quality schools. Three things that in my mind are, I hear them every day, and I'm sure you do as well. So that made a lot of sense. We do have a full report, and I asked that it be put on our website last week. I think if it's not up there now, it should be in the next few days. We've got essentially an executive summary of the results of the meetings. And then we have a full range of the questions and the results that were given at the meeting. So in total, I believe it's about 150 pages worth of information. And it's pretty interesting to go through because you see differences between each of the four areas and answers to the questions. The four areas that we held meetings correspond with the four planning areas that we've designated. We didn't take a look at the county as a whole, or we haven't yet, taken a look at the county as a whole. We've tried to break it out into manageable parts. I'm sure you all are aware of the annexation agreements between the three towns, the three main towns, larger towns in the county. So we've taken those districts and classified those as three of our planning areas for making our decisions in this plan. And the final planning area, the North planning area, is north of the South Yadkin River. So we felt that the geographic orientation, similar issues, and the orientation in general of these areas fits very well. And when we get down to making land use recommendations, I think that they'll be much more manageable in these smaller areas. We can also hit the issues that we've heard at the meetings much better if we break it down as well. We will integrate all of this into one plan for you to have, but we hope to make sure that we can get the specifics done where we can actually pull a portion of that out when we're making recommendations to you, when the staff and the planning board are making recommendations to you, to be able to utilize that and get a little bit more fine-tuned, fine-grained detail. Getting into our major points, farmland preservation, as you heard and as you adopted our farmland protection plan tonight, has been a very big issue, and as you would expect, in the Northern District, it was the biggest issue. We're treating agriculture as an industry and as a way of life, trying to again, look for more ways to try to preserve that land without stepping on others' toes. It's always a balancing act, and I understand that. And I think that the people that we're working with understand that any decision we make that is going to be beneficial to the farming community is going to have impact somewhere else and vice versa. So we're trying to weigh those things out. Again, the intergovernmental cooperation. Got some acronyms. ETJ, we release it all the time. USA was a concept, the urban service areas, that we looked at several years ago. That has been bantered about through our discussions on this plan. The intent is to deal with the growth areas, is what I call them, outside of the towns. The parts of the county that we get the constant releases of jurisdiction requests for. The areas where Mooresville or Statesville or Troutman are extending utilities and therefore there's a demand for more density and therefore more children are impacting the schools and emergency services. We're trying to get a handle on how to best deal with those areas because in my mind, that's the biggest part of this plan. And I think that we've got some good concepts out there, have not settled on anything as of yet, but we're working pretty hard on it. And the towns have been very cooperative in dealing with me knocking on their door all the time. Our committees, again, we have the technical and the steering committee. We are going to have a second round of public input. Once we get through with some of our basic land use decisions and the policy recommendations that are going to come back to you eventually, I want to get the buy-in from our steering committee. Again, those are the ones that are dealing with the bigger issues and the bigger policy decisions. Then take it for another round of public input. Now that may be another four meetings, but then we will be able to take more or less a finished document back out to the public. Again, don't know how exactly we're going to achieve that at this point. Because of the low attendance, I'm going to kind of reassess how we do it. But we'll definitely keep you informed of when it goes back out to the public. After that, we hope to take it to the planning board after some changes, which I would anticipate from the public comment, get an endorsement from the planning board and then eventually come back to this board to hopefully get a stamp of approval with no changes whatsoever. And finally, I've tried to sum it up as briefly and as concisely as I can. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have for the public or anyone watching on TV or the internet. My email address is up here in the county's website, as well as Clarion. Clarion Associates is our consultant who has been working very well with us, and that's their website. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Mr. Smith, you know, the property down on the corner of West Moreland 21 is a piece of property. We've been approached, I think, twice about rezoning, and I don't know how many times they paid a visit to your office. And I think you either discouraged them at some point or they became discouraged. But I think that's indicative of some of the problems that we face on some of our larger corridors in the county. How much attention, I guess, is being given to areas such as, say, Highway 21 from Exit 42 down to West Moreland? There's going to have to be a lot of collaboration there between the DOT and Troutman and us because the DOT is only going to allow so many cuts off of 21, yet Troutman controls the water and sewer. And I think West Moreland is their southern boundary that they worked out with Mooresville. But yet we're going to retain zoning jurisdiction over a large part of that area. Are we going to be able to collaborate all of that and get all those cats herded in the same direction? Because it's problematic because I alluded to it earlier. There's a lot of property owners with a "for sale" sign on some of these corridors. I think there's a couple out, Ms. Tyce, out on Cornelius Road now. As soon as they heard there was a potential sewer going out there, folks on that Cornelius Road put up some "for sale" signs. And I know they're speculative sellers, but there's also speculative buyers. And at some point, you know how it works, somebody's going to say, we'll put $50 million or $100 million worth of property out there. And I know this board, they're probably going to rezonate. Is much thought being given to that?
Well, you hit the nail on the head. You know, that's the puzzle that we have to put together through this plan. But honestly, we've got to put it together just about every month. Ideally, you want to tie your land use to transportation. However, we don't really have much, if any, control over our transportation system. 21 is one of those corridors that's, right now, especially as you go up to Exit 42, one of the hottest parts of the county development-wise, from my perspective. But there are no plans whatsoever to expand that road. So what we try to do is work with developers through primarily our conditional zoning process to, you know, try and get what we can from them to help us get the road put in place because they will impact the road. But that's only a stopgap measure. So we're trying to address that, to answer your question. We're trying to address those areas, 21, Cornelius Road. Actually, with Cornelius, we're working with the town of Mooresville right now on that. Perth Road, we did just address it, but we're going to have to continuously look at Perth Road as well as Highway 150. That's where we're going to pay a good bit of our attention through this study. But again, like you alluded to, we've got to deal with DOT, get them on board, and we have to deal with Troutman, Mooresville and Statesville. They are the key. And again, getting back to that intergovernmental cooperation, that's going to be probably the most important point in this plan.
One thought that occurred to me while I was thinking about this, and I know you have to avoid the pitfall of contract zoning, which is illegal, but is there any way you could go to a developer or just develop a set of standards and hold out a carrot and say, if you're willing to participate in the improvement of turn lanes or infrastructure at some point, then you give them more opportunity to develop internally in their development, which would increase their profit? Is there any way you could design it that way?
I think there probably are. You know, I think we get fairly close to adequate facilities ordinances and things like that when we do it. But we're trying to do that very thing on a case-by-case basis through zoning.
I don't, well, you know, I'm a little bit of a libertarian. I don't like the government telling anybody they got to do anything. But if you can give them an option that would be beneficial to them and thereby create an incentivized process for them to ameliorate some of these conditions and in exchange for that reap or greater profit, I think that's probably the best way to go.
I think that's a good point.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
This is now our public comment period. Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? Any matter? I don't have no one signed up, Brian. Okay. We will now move on to our new business. Do we have any new business? If not, our county manager's report?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call on Tracy to have me here in just a moment because it's been about a month and a half since I initially announced my retirement to be effective February the 1st. And at that time, the board had asked if I would work with you at least in developing a process for the recruitment process for finding or recruiting another county manager. And what I'm presenting to you is my efforts to this point that I wanted to present to you because one of the things that is included in this is a schedule that I would like for you to consider and hopefully will concur with. And I'm not going to go over all of this, but I would hope that possibly when you meet again, either September the 30th or the meeting October the 7th, I believe, is our next regular scheduled meeting, that maybe we could have some time to discuss this a little bit more. But real quickly, running through the tabs is, the first tab is the Recruitment Guidelines for Selecting a Local Government Administrator. Now, I've plagiarized some of this information, but what I've tried to do is to go through and highlight some areas that I think that you should pay particular attention to. But I hope that you will find time to review all of this information. But certainly, I hope you'll find time to review the areas that are highlighted. The same thing with the second tab. Again, this is just some information that I think will assist you as you try to determine the criteria that you are going to be evaluating candidates for the position on. And again, I've highlighted some information there. I've also included in Tab 3 something that I think, when I started the business 35 years ago, we were told that a contract wasn't worth the paper that was written on. But now, it's almost impossible to recruit a person into a position such as this without some type of employment agreement that particularly addresses severance and some other benefit issues and so forth. So I've included something in there for you to review. And again, these are guidelines. This is something, that particular area would certainly be something that you would work with your county attorney on drafting and developing, something of that nature. The fourth is the Powers and Duties of the Manager, which comes directly out of the General Statutes. And I did include it in here, but you do have in your own personnel policies that you've adopted something that expounds even more on it than the statute does. And of course, that is available to you. We've done some research on the commensurate salaries or comparable salaries for counties of commensurate size. These are the same counties that we use anytime that we do a study of, a market study or a salary analysis and so forth for other positions as well. So these are the same counties that the county commissioners a few years ago adopted as the counties that we are to use as comparisons. And that's the latest information that is available at this time. Tab number six is the Position Description for the County Manager. This, again, is part of your classification plan that the county commissioners have adopted. So these are the description for the position as you've adopted. Now, the next tab is the one I wanted you to take a close look at, if they're in order, and yours doesn't seem to be. So is everybody okay? Seven, okay. Should be Tab 7. This is a suggested recruitment schedule. And looking at what needs to occur between now and the day that a new person will be sworn in and take the office, my recommendation is that you begin that you begin the advertisement process on or about October the twelfth and that start receiving applications immediately thereafter. That you would close applications on or about November the fourteenth. Then that would give approximately fifteen days for you to review the applications and select the top candidates that you choose to, to interview, conduct those interviews in the first part of December. The latter part of December, you would negotiate a contract with the, and benefits with the top candidates and then would be in a position to announce the final selection by the end of December. That, what that allows is if, if the board selects a person that is presently working in a similar position in another jurisdiction, that person is going to need at least thirty-day notice to their, to their other employer. And so that allows for that to take place then with the, I've been able to be sworn in and take off, office sometime first part of February. So that's the schedule as it's lined out and, and probably has enough time built into it. It's your schedule. It's, it's as fast as you want to go on it or, or whatever period of time that you want to take. I, my, my feeling is that this is an adequate amount of time. And, and you can see what it does. It, it, it really delays the interview process and so forth until after it is known who, who will be on the board of county commissioners as well. Because that's, as, as important as it is for you to know who the candidates are going to be, it's important for the candidates to know who the commissioners are going to be. And so I think this time will work out fine with that. And so, and in addition to that, I've got a tab that just recommends that, some areas that I think that you should advertise for candidates for the position or applicants for the position nationally. It would be NACO, which you're a member of, ICMA, which is the International City County Manager Association, which I'm a member of, but the county, because I am a member of the county is also. And then the regional newspapers, such as the News and Observer, the Charlotte Observer. And I was trying to get some information from the Asheville Citizen, which would pretty much blanket the state, but so far, I don't have anything from them. But we still got some time on that. And, and I just wanted to present this to you tonight so that, first of all, you could, if this was what, what you felt that you would like to have as a guideline, then I, I wanted to, you to be able to let me know if, if this was what you were looking for or if there's additional information you would like for me to include in this process. I will say this, the HR department, I think, is perfectly capable of receiving the applications. The, the HR director could receive them, but if you choose for the applications to go to someone else, that, that would be fine as well. But I feel the HR department or the HR director could receive those. I don't really know how many applicants you may have for this, but I think you will have a, this is, this is a sought-after county, so I believe that you will have a considerable number. Many of them will not meet your, your requirements or your criteria. And so I think the HR department would be perfectly in line to, to kind of work with you to separate those so that you don't necessarily, unless you choose to, feel that you need to, to actually go through every one of them. But I think that you will have quite a few that, that you will be presented that will meet your criteria and, and your minimum qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Questions or comments regarding the information?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Mashburn for preparing these guidelines for us because, Mr. Mashburn, it's going to be hard to replace. And it's going to, it's going to take a lot of time. And, and it looks like it's well organized. And we appreciate you taking the time to help us out.
Well, and there are even, when you get to it, there are some suggested guidelines as far as interviews, some suggested questions that you want to ask. But of course, again, all of this is, is guidelines. The main thing I would encourage you to do is that you do have a set list of questions that you ask each candidate. Many times, those questions may spur other questions, but I think it's important that you, that you do have a set list of questions that you would ask each one of them. And, and there are some recommendations in here.
Questions? Mr. Johnson, any questions?
No, sir. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you again for preparing this for us. And we appreciate the information. Looked at some, real good information. We hope to use it soon.
I saw, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And Mr. Norman, we need to continue.
Yeah.
The meeting.
Okay. Then we'll adjourn the meeting till September thirtieth, seven o'clock. On favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.